Good evening. I call the Maplewood City Council meeting to order on Tuesday, November ninth, two thousand twenty-one. Please join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance
to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, would you please conduct a roll call to ascertain quorum? Oh, yes, sorry.
Councilmember Crossley.
Here.
It's a member of Buckingham. Mayor Knapper.
Here.
Councilmember Page.
Here.
Councilmember Phillips.
Yeah.
Councilmember Schmidt.
Here.
Councilmember Wood.
Here.
Madam Mayor, Quarmus present.
Thank you. May I have a motion to excuse Councilmember Buckingham?
Motion to excuse Councilperson Buckingham?
Second.
Any discussion? All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item number five. Ms. Graves, Attorney Graves, excuse me.
Thank you, Mayor. I would request that the record in the minutes of this meeting reflect that pursuant to section six, ten point zero one five of the Missouri Sunshine Law, the members of the council who are not present in chambers can participate in tonight's meeting and vote because we remain in an emergency caused by the COVID nineteen pandemic. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, item number six.
Approval of the council agenda.
May I have a motion?
Motion to approve the council agenda.
Second.
Any discussion? All right, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Madam Clerk, item number seven.
In the public forum.
At this time, the public is welcome to raise their Zoom hand, and Mr. Reese will call upon you, and you may provide a comment to us.
Hi, Mayor Knapper. I'm showing no hands.
All right, thank you. Madam Clerk, item number eight.
Our announcement.
Um, I just have a few reminders. One about the pancake breakfast that's going to be Saturday from eight to eleven at the VFW is the Kiwanis, and the proceeds benefit MRH School District Programs. The other one is the December third, that's a Christmas tree lighting and walk from six to nine, and it starts at the CMB Bank Park. So those are two things just to be reminded of, and that's all I have.
I would add that this weekend begins scouting for food, so you'll get a blue bag hopefully on your door Saturday morning, and then the following weekend scouts will be around to collect it. It's the largest food drive in the city.
It's always a good one. I always write to your door, and then they come get it. How easy
It's pretty easy, right? And and we really do ourselves proud, making what always shown is really beautifully on that project, so.
I will not be in town for the Kiwanis Pancake Breakfast, but please support it. They have delicious pancakes, and I believe it's all you can eat, isn't it?
Yeah.
So please, please support that, and then also the scouting for food, please support that as well, and it's kind of cool to see the little ones, you know, pick up their their bags, so.
And watch for them on the streets, because sometimes they're not so careful.
And thank you. All right. Any additional announcements? Okay, Madam Clerk, item number nine.
Approval of the October twenty-six, twenty twenty-one city council meeting minutes.
May I have a motion?
Motion to approve the October twenty-six, two thousand twenty-one city council meeting minutes.
Second.
All right, any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you. Motion carries. Item number ten, Madam Clerk.
Sustainability Commission Report by Heidi Shane.
Hey, Ms. Shane, welcome. Welcome, Ms. Shane.
Hello. Thank you for inviting me. I'm going to share my screen. Appreciate the opportunity to share what we've been doing and what we plan on looking forward to in the next year. I've done this a couple times, but let me know how it's going. Give me some feedback. Can everybody see my screen? Alrighty, this is a brief but informative. That's the goal. Okay. So who are we? We are the Maplewood Sustainability Commission, and this is the year in review. We've held nine meetings to this point. I am the chair, Heidi Shane, and we have another election coming up at the next meeting in December. And so there could be some some role changes at that time, but right now here's the current committee. And I'm not going to read everything, but you can see there are people serving on this committee and their terms, and some of them are newer, and some of them have been around for quite a long time. Jonathan Spencer is leaving early. I'll call that. He was chair in the past, and we were very blessed to have him there. He was enthusiastic and capable, and and he still probably will show up for volunteer events, but he has a lot going on, so we graciously excused him from his position. Okay, major topics. This is how I structured this. Major topics and looking ahead. That's that's the agenda here. So what are the major topics? EV charging station. Again, I'm not going to read this verbatim, but we were enthusiastic about having EV charging stations beyond with the rise in electric vehicles and having Maplewood such a destination, you know, for people. So we were really pleased to hear that there were plans to install an EV charging station at the Marietta lot. So that'll be a dual level-two charger. It can charge two cars at once, and that's exciting stuff. And feel free to just chime in if you have questions, or just let me ramble, and then we can do them later. So honeysuckle removal. I was at this event. We did not realize how popular this was going to be. The Boy Scouts were there, too. We all met and were there for several hours on both sides of the park. If you know Lindbergh has a bridge, and then there's two sides. There is so much honeysuckle there, and we created a huge amount of work for Public Works, which we were sort of, it was bittersweet, because we just laid tons of honeysuckle for them to chop later. We we wish we had more energy and time. There's definitely a need to do more of that. Okay, moving on, celebrating Native Americans. I am not going to pretend to understand how to pronounce these names, but they are the Miami, the Great Sioux Nation, Osage, Kickapoo. And so we were located on these formerly inhabited lands, and so we were really pleased that the city council passed a resolution declaring that the second Monday of October is Indigenous Peoples' Day, and that was at the prompting of the Sustainability Commission, Jonathan Spencer, to give him his due credit there. He followed up on that. And then our two thousand twenty-one St. Louis County Recycling and Solid Waste Reduction Grant, Tiffany Hyde was very gracious, and in Laura Miller's absence, wrote the grant and submitted it, and we were funded for this program. So we are going to have an electronic recycling event held on March fifth, and the council, the commission members will be there to help direct traffic and pick things up for elderly people and just be helpful in general. So we're really excited about that. The year had, looking forward, you know, there was some discussion at the commission at the commission level about how to stay organized, stay on task, benchmarking our success for future commission members. So there is a there is an effort to create a work plan to submit to council or administration, whichever is deemed the most appropriate, and basically it keeps us organized and more thoughtful about our approach to sustainability. And I think it's a smart deal, and so I'm very supportive of this idea. So what are we even thinking out? Like, what are ideas that are floating around? Well, in in the past, we've had environmentally purchasing program. We've had an intern working with the Environmental Law Center. They drafted this. It's at the city level for review, and we're hoping to get some feedback on that, just to see where we can make a difference. We understand it's very complex, the way the city purchases things, but that that may or may not be part of this work plan. Updating city building codes, we there's there's rumor and planning to adopt some two thousand twenty-one International Energy Conservation Codes, and also exploring ADUs. There's a typo there. I'll totally omit that. Accessory dwelling units. I will correct correct that before I submit it to Laura, but those are basically, there's a whole level of ordinances that are necessary to make it really effective, and this is our hope that Maplewood is not only a destination and cool place to live, but it's also affordable for people, and so by creating ordinances that are friendly to ADUs, it will allow people to rent out smaller, like grandmother houses, and make affordable, you know, affordable, like, because we believe, well, that's not, we, I'm speaking for a week. I think I believe, and it's thought, you know, through our discussions, that climate and social justice intersect, and so this is a piece of that puzzle. Okay. And I'll just, that's one of my passions, so I will. I will let that go for now, because less is more sometimes for right now. Let's move on. Renewable energy and energy efficiency and a climate action plan. So we are very concerned about climate climate change and about the climate emergency, so we want to encourage the city to join the Green City Challenge, where you can co-share. There's an expense of like three hundred and fifty dollars, but there's a huge amount of synergy and other cities that can provide you know, so we don't have to recreate the wheel, and we can learn from other cities that have already done this. It's a huge opportunity for a staff member like Laura to or someone else to attend those meetings. I think Laura is the most apropos to do that and bring back a lot of really good ideas and maybe collaborations with other cities. Okay, and speaking of collaboration, we'd like to collaborate with other city commissions, including the library and the library. We've already done that. The Park Board joined one of our meetings and 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 asked for some help for a workday at Centwood Park to help maintain the park, and so there was some you know, some elbow grease lent in that direction, and it was really a good reminder that, you know, collectively, we can do so much more than trying to work in a little bubble. So we're open to more things and more opportunities, but also the library is an awesome conduit to help disseminate really good information to the public. We have a lot of expertise in our commission, different like, some people are really good with native plants or energy conservation, that sort of thing, so we're hoping to work with the library to provide some educational events. And then we also, lastly, would support the expansion of the Green Rivers, Green Greenway through Maplewood. So that's a little brief, but that's my report. I'm happy to answer questions and get your feedback.
Thank you so much, Ms. Shane, for joining us and and giving us this presentation, giving us a high-level overview of what you all plan to work on in the future. I think all of it is great. And really, what you're passionate about, the conversations that we've had, I think you know I'm passionate about that, too. I do think I agree with you that climate and housing affordability do intersect, and so I'm just very excited that the Sustainability Commission, you all are having those conversations and look forward to learning about your ideas, or possibly even giving you some some of mine or other communities giving some ideas to you all for you all to consider as well. Thank you.
You're very welcome. It's a labor of love, for sure. So anyone else?
I have a quick question. This is potentially a question for Mr. Reese. Where are we on the EV charging stations? I know that's been in in process for a couple years now.
Sure. Thanks for the question, Councilmember Phillips. We actually have an RFP that's, I'm sorry, went out for some bids, and we'll be getting back this Thursday, and we'll be turning that around very quickly to select someone and do the installation. So I'll give you a more exact date, but this is going to happen very quickly.
That's great news. Thanks so much.
I'm just really briefly, Heidi, do you know what other cities are in the Green City Challenge? Is it like, is anyone else in St. Louis region like part of that, or is it is it sort of like more of a national level scene?
Thanks for asking. It's actually a very local effort. It's a it's a national organization in United States Green Building Council, but it's a chapter level endeavor, so there'll be tons of cities that are tons. That's a little, like, a little bit of exaggeration, but there'll be many cities that are local, and I expect St. Louis City, but I have Brentwood, Webster Groves, like, you know, Collinsville even. In fact, Collinsville has a really excellent work plan that we're looking at, because we're trying to find similar cities, and what they've done, and Webster Groves is actually adopting sort of the similar model of what Collinsville's developed as a work plan for their Sustainability Commission, so we're trying to not reinvent the wheel, and I that's why I think the USGBC Missouri Chapter, St. Louis specifically, will be really a great way to create efficiencies with this work, because it's it's not something that we need to do in a bubble.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you. I think this was a great presentation, and I like all of the highlights you've pulled out. This is some really exciting stuff. Thank you.
You're welcome. Yeah, I appreciate the opportunity as well. Is there anyone else, or?
I just I just want to say, too, I really love how you guys, how like commissions are working together and working with other parts of our city to to combine your expertise and do stuff together. I just think that's really neat, too. So I look forward to seeing more of that.
I agree. We're definitely stronger together, right? That's the whole point.
Definitely.
Well, it's been fun, and I'll take my leave, I guess. Can I? Am I? Can I be excused?
Thank you.
Thank you for your presentation. Thank you.
Okay, bye-bye. And wait, let me just take a second to thank you for everything you do. I just got a little taste of like the chair position, and it's a lot of work, you know, we do. So thank you very much for all your time that you spend helping the city, moving the city, and caring for the city. We very much appreciate it.
Thank you.
You.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, item number eleven.
Bill sixty-one seventy-six and ordinance of the city council of the city of Maplewood, Missouri appropriating one thousand one hundred seventy dollars in local grant funds from account three-two-zero-zero-zero-seven-zero-zero-one-zero half-cent fire sales tax capital at play.
That was the first reading. May I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All right, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, Madam Clerk, may I have the second reading?
Bill sixty-one seventy-six and ordinance of the city council of the city of Maplewood, Missouri appropriating one thousand one hundred seventy dollars in local grant funds from account three-two-zero-zero-zero-seven-zero-zero-one-zero half-cent fire sales tax capital at play.
Thank you. May I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All right, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, the first and second motion carry. The third and final reading will take place at the next council meeting. Madam Clerk, item number twelve.
Bill sixty-one seventy-five and ordinance of the city council of the city of Maplewood, Missouri amending chapter thirty-eight personnel to modify article nine holidays to include June nineteenth, Juneteenth, National Independence Day as a legal public holiday.
That is the final reading. May I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All right, hearing none. Well, I will say, thank you all for this. All right, hearing no further discussion, Madam Clerk, please conduct a roll call vote.
Councilmember Crossley.
Yes.
Mayor Knapper.
Yes.
Councilmember Page.
Yes.
Councilmember Phillips.
Yes.
Councilmember Schmidt.
Yes.
Councilmember Wood.
Yeah.
Ordinance number five-nine-seven-zero is approved.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, item number thirteen.
Old Business, November sixteenth, two thousand twenty-one budget town hall update.
Okay, just jumping in here. Several updates of the budget town hall. First of all, the agenda itself, we're going to after we've gone over the budget overview and timeline, we'll give a an opportunity for five or so minutes for people to review the breakout session questions and digest them as we talked about, rather than just rushing into the breakout session. So I'll review those questions out loud and make sure everyone understands them. So we made that change. We created a Facebook event for the town hall that's occurring on November sixteenth. We've already posted the breakout session questions, and we'll do a reminder on that. We've designed and purchased the signs, and they're already out and about. You've probably seen them in the community. And that points people to the event itself, and then also gives the option to participate via Zoom, or we will open council chambers, as we talked about, and allow people to come to city council in person, and we'll make arrangements for that. Make sure people are socially distanced and safe. So that's been advertised as well, and it was in the in the Maplewood. So that's the update update, the budget town hall. Are there any questions or more to add on that? I'll go into the next item, our citizen business survey update. So I included in the packet, right after the meeting last time, I sent to Robert Haycock with ETC a lot of the all the questions that were raised by council members, and I'm not going to read them all, but just to summarize, it wasn't surprising that six of seven of you received it. Two-thirds of all households in Maplewood have received the survey, and that's two hundred and six, two thousand six hundred and ninety-one households were mailed, and with the goal of having three hundred returned. So they always mail eight to nine times more than what they're trying to achieve there. As far as homeowners and renters, there's an equal chance of those of those homeowners or renters being randomly selected. However, because of our concern, and I pushed them on this, they're doing a second mailing targeted to renters, so we make sure that we get a good representation there. So far, this is as of yesterday, to get hot off the press, again, for residents, for households, for residents, total household renters, we're trying to get three hundred responses. To date, we've received two hundred and seventy-three, which is ninety-three percent, which is very good. And we still have more time, the next several weeks, and then our target for businesses is to have fifty return, and we've had thirty-eight so far for a seventy-six percent achieve achievement there. We're doing extra phone calls. They're doing extra phone calls to businesses to make sure we get our fifty minimum target. And then the plan is either on January eleventh or January twenty-fifth in front of council, we'll do a report, we'll do a presentation, and we can have if we're meeting in person, in council desires, we can have the Mr. Haycock in person with us, or we can have him present over Zoom, and we can make that decision as it gets closer, but that's kind of the update, the citizen business survey.
Thank you for that, Michael. And I think also, too, if there's anything we can do to remind residents to turn those back in, and be more than happy to like try and support that. Right? If we, just because we, you know, target renters, doesn't mean people won't forget just like the holidays and that sort of thing. So if there's something we can do to support that, I'd be happy to help.
Thank you.
I echo what Councilmember Crossley said. All right. I ask this question. We just received, Mr. Reese, is there a way for a business to do the survey online?
Yes. Residents of businesses both have the option. They can return it, or they're directed to go online, so it's really their choice.
Okay, but you have to receive the
Correct. You have to receive. Yeah, not all businesses are getting one. Every business is
Okay.
The residential one is more more random, but
Is the code the same for everyone, or do you get like a unique ID for each person, you know?
I don't know the answer to that.
Okay.
So just in case a business may have been overlooked, should they contact you, or should they contact Ms. Laura Miller?
Sure, haven't contacted me directly.
Okay.
Yeah, they can do that by calling me at six-four-six-three-six-zero-three, or email me at M-dash put me out here, cityofmaplewood.com.
Yeah.
M-dash, M-dash Reese, cityofmaplewood.com.
We got you, Michael. We got you. Sorry, Mr. Reese, Mr. Reese. All right.
All good. Yeah, contact me directly, and again, we're making an extra effort to reach out to businesses so that they respond as well, and we hit our target.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Those targets, excuse me, those targets that we have for both residential and business are kind of a minimum target. If we go over that, great. So we just kind of have a minimum target to get the results we need.
And did I, maybe I missed it, but what is the deadline?
Yeah, so it's late, late November.
Okay.
I did not say the deadline, so we have about three to four more weeks of collecting collecting the information.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Madam Clerk, item number fourteen.
Is council communication.
I'm sorry, I would like to communicate a thank you to the Maplewood Police Department for that report that they have given us about crime and how to, you know, not be a victim, and I just thought that that was very nice of them to give that to us, and also for being so vigilant in the ever-increasing crime in our area. So we'd just like to tell them, thank you for all that.
Any additional communication? All right, Madam Clerk, item number fifteen.
Is the mayor's report.
All right, you all bear with me. It's going to be possibly a little long, okay? All right, the first thing that I wanted to say is thank you to City Hall, Mr. Reese for the wonderful Maple Leaf. I received a copy yesterday and the layout looks great. It's just great. So thank you all so much. And I know Ms. Laura Miller worked diligently on creating that new format. And so I just want to show appreciation for all the work that she did. Again, the Maple Leaf looks great. Okay, so I wanted to talk with you all about ordinances. Earlier this year, some community members were talking about how restrictive an ordinance that we have regarding food trucks is. And so I have taken a look at that. I've talked to Attorney Graves about that. I've talked to Mr. Reese about it. And I've also reached out to our Mid County Chamber of Commerce and spoken with Executive Director Ms. Janine Beck as well as some chamber members that are owners of restaurants, just to talk about the ordinance, talk about the history of it, their concerns, and possibly addressing some concerns that the community has as well as any concerns that they may have with the change to the ordinance. And so right now, Mr. Reese and I are scheduled to meet again with the Executive Director of the chamber as well as representatives of the restaurants to talk about some possible changes to this ordinance. Jack, excuse me, Attorney Graves has worked on like possible changes to the ordinance. So I'm going to present that to the Mid County Chamber of Commerce for their review. And if they're, if they give it the thumbs up, then I'm going to come back to you all and say, okay, you know, here's this ordinance. This is an understanding of what the community wants and what the food truck, I mean, excuse me, what our small businesses, like our restaurants, say they want as well. And, you know, we have this like, I don't know, middle ground, if you will. So again, I'll submit that to you all for discussion and, and then we can go forward. But I wanted to give you all a heads up of the work that's going on regarding that ordinance concerning food trucks. The next ordinance that I just kind of want to give you all a heads up on is called the Crown Act. And that is actually legislation that prohibits discrimination based on a person's hair texture or hairstyle. And so I have been talking again with Mr. Reese and Attorney Graves about this. And Ms. Attorney Graves was kind enough to kind of let me know that this ordinance, should you all want to create this ordinance and enact it, this will fall under our Human Relations section of our ordinances. And so because of that, what I would like to do is work with Attorney Graves to, to have this ordinance draft. Really, let's just keep it real. Attorney Graves is going to do all of that. But anyways, I'm going to work with her. She's going to do that work. And then what I would like to do is submit that to you, Councilmember Crossley, because I believe you're the lead on that. Cool. So then, so then your, your ordinance committee can look at that ordinance, discuss it and then, you know, add to it or, or, you know, whatever you see fit. But I'd like to make sure that y'all are involved with that because you're already working on that chapter. So wanted to give you all the heads up of that and then especially you, Councilmember Crossley, that that's going to come your way pretty soon. All right. So then the next item I'd like to talk to you about is housing affordability. So I think you all know, that is, that is like my main priority to ensure that members of our community that want to remain here are able to do so. And then also people that want to come into Maplewood and be here as a resident or resident, excuse me, are able to do so as well. So because of that, I have been having meetings and forming partnerships with different people and, and entities throughout our region as well as the state. And so I wanted to let you all know that I am working with the Missouri Inclusive Housing, which is a nonprofit. And the Executive Director is Mr. Wayne Crawford. And right now, we are talking about having a housing symposium sometime in the spring of 2022. And the purpose of the symposium is to let our community members know how much affordable housing we actually have in Maplewood. I know that there is some belief that because we have a substantial amount of renters in our community, that because you're a renter, then that's affordable housing and that is not the case. That's just not, the two, the two do not equate. So if you're renting, but you're in a, you know, one bedroom and it is a thousand dollars, I will tell you that that is not affordable, at least from what Mr. Crawford has told me, that, that that space with that rent does not equal housing affordability. And so we're going to talk about what we do have in our community and then we're going to flesh out ways that we can create inclusive housing and ensure housing affordability for our residents so they can remain here. So that again, is going to come in the spring of 2022. Excuse me. And then also I want to let council members know that I am meeting with Mr. Reese as well as developers that are experienced in creating affordable housing. And I also want to have just a brief talk about this. When I say affordable housing, I know that there are some members of our community that automatically think Section 8 housing. And that is not what I am talking about. When I am talking with developers about creating affordable housing and, and those developers are in turn talking to me about low income tax credit buildings, they are talking about buildings that can be created for working class people. And so that means people that are graduating with a degree in education that want to be teachers, but you know, starting out, their pay may be maybe in the 30s to the low 40s. That is considered working class. And they would qualify for this low income housing. Another example I have would be our firefighters that are just starting entry level, our police officers that are just starting entry level. And then other people in our community like our custodians that are in our school district. So I, that is what I am talking about. And I just, really, that wasn't so much for council. That was really for community members that are watching. I just want you to understand what I'm talking about when I say affordable housing and ensuring that people can remain here. So I'm meeting with developers that have experience in creating this and I will just keep you all abreast as to those conversations that I'm having and ideas that come from the communications that I'm having with those developers. All right. And then I wanted to talk with you all about our school district, Maplewood Richmond Heights. So first, excuse me, I met with Dr. Jamison, our superintendent for the school district. And we are going to have a kids' town hall. Our goal is to have this town hall before the end of this semester. That's the goal. But please don't hold us to that. I have talked with Mr. Reese about that. Mr. Reese will be present as well. And then of course, if council members would like to join us, we, you are more than welcome and, and you are invited to join us. This is going to be a bit of a hybrid town hall. Dr. Jamison is going to choose some representatives from the school district. It will be from the sixth grade to the 12th grade. And we will have probably about 20 people in the Research and Design Center at the Middle School, High School building. And then we will also set it up so we can have Zoom link. And it will be webinar style. So those that are not a part of this focus group, if you will, will still be able to participate and ask questions via chat. So again, we'll have a hybrid town hall that is focused on our kids in the school district. And then finally, I talked with Dr. Jamison about parking. I know Ward One, we have some issues with students that park in a way that impedes residents. And so she wanted me to let you all know this and community members that are watching. So the school district is partnering with students and families to ensure student parking is not impeding residents. The, the school district has asked the city to ticket student vehicles that impede city residents. So please share this. If your student is parking in a way that is blocking a resident's driveway, the superintendent has asked the city to provide that car with a ticket. So I just want y'all to know that. Yes. Yes. So please, please, please tell your children to be respectful of driveways. So residents can get out and come and go as they please from their house. That concludes my report. Thank you. All right. Madam Clerk, item number 16.
City Attorney's Report.
Nothing to report, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, item number eight, excuse me, 17.
The City Managers Report.
Almost skipped me again.
I know.
I have six very quick reports. So much of this was in my, not all, but much of it was in my City Manager Report, just going to highlight the plan and hopefully this works for everybody is to have a December 14th work session at six o'clock before a regular meeting at 7:30. And that's to talk about boards and commissions, review the, the the ordinance or resolution language and discuss potential amendments. That's December 14th. Now, I don't have an update yet, but I'll be following up with Councilmember Fockingham and also going to be working with our new IT, our IT firm to see what we can do to try to meet in person and also allow for this to be over Zoom at the same time. So stay tuned on that. Again, our goal of December 14th is to meet in person, but we will follow up. Number two, just a reminder, on November 17th, from seven to nine, we'll have a Fire Chief Listening Session. The public can identify their priorities for a new Fire Chief. That'll be a listening session. And again, we're going to do that over Zoom, but we'll also have, if people want to come to council chambers, they can participate in that way as well. Item number three, just following up on what I put on my report. So preliminarily, I've identified about $8,500 for a retreat. And the plan right now is to do a retreat with everything we got going on. But the plan is to do a retreat in May of next year. And at some point in the future, we can discuss the logistics and more, you know, potential agenda for that retreat. Number four, just to give, I know there's been some questions about our website. So a quick update on that. I'm not going to cover everything that was in the memo. But the content, content migration has been completed. So everything from the current site has been migrated to the new site. And right now Laura Miller and Tiffany Hyde are focused on training, content cleanup, testing. And then with the goal of the site going live, and we say going live by January 31st of next year. We'll certainly keep you updated and keep the public updated on that. So we try to have a seamless transition. That's item number four. Item number five, I just want to recognize and thank our police department and for their efforts in having this second annual Warm Clothing Drive. And you may have seen this, this is going to start on November 15th and go until January 1st. So what we're looking for here are hats, gloves, scarves, socks, blankets and coats. And these should be either newer or gently used items. So that's for our Warm Clothing Drive, second annual. And then the final item I have, I'm happy to answer any questions on this. I just want to give a quick update. I let everybody know that our Fire District or Karen Delver has resigned to take a new job with the City of Clayton. Her last day is November 26th. It's a priority to find a new one. We're going to do a thorough but a quick search. Keep you updated along the way. We already posted the job yesterday on numerous sites and, and within several professional organizations. And we're already getting resumes or coming in. So we'll start interviewing in late November, early December and continue until we find the right person for the job. I did want to let you know as Karen starts her new job with the City of Clayton, we're going to retain her services in a part-time way for a couple of months to help us with some critical deadlines that we have related to annual financial report, financial audit, disclosure requirements and several tax issues and programs. So there's a lot going on right now in her department. So we want to try to, again, have a seamless transition here. So that's my report. Happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
For the Warm Clothing Drive, is it coats for adults and children?
Yes.
And gloves and stuff? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. People can drop those off, can drop those off at the police department here, the first floor of City Hall.
Where's that located? In the building somewhere?
I think they usually have a bin like right outside the door on the first floor. Like if you go in the back.
Okay.
I think last year they had a bin right outside.
Yeah. Thought it might be helpful to people to know that to go around back or whatever.
Good call. Good call. Councilmember one.
Thank you.
Y'all, you have to tell me I'm on mute now. Okay, Madam Clerk, item number 18.
Public forum.
At this time, the public is welcome to provide any comment. And please do so by raising your little Zoom hand and Mr. Reese will call upon you.
Mayor Knapper, there are no hands.
All right, thank you. I understand that we do have a matter to discuss in a closed session. May I have a motion to enter close session?
Motion to hold a closed session, discuss matters relating to documents related to a negotiated contract under Section 610.021, subsection 12 of the revised statutes of Missouri.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All right, I will let the public know that council will not return from this closed session. Again, council will not return from this closed session. Thank you all for joining us this evening. Have a great
We need a roll call.
Need a vote.
Excuse me. Yes. Still, thank you all for joining us this evening. Have a good rest of the week. Madam Clerk, may I have a roll call vote?
Mayor Knapper?
Yes.
Councilmember Page?
Yes.
Councilmember Phillips?
Yes.
Councilmember Schmidt?
Yes.
Councilmember Wood?
Yes.
Councilmember Crossley?
Yes.